I'd like to call this meeting to order. Thanks for your presence here tonight, this specially called board session. Just a couple of rules of order or suggestions tonight. Number one, we don't have any agenda item or plan for any type of vote to occur tonight. So, the purpose of this board meeting is primarily for the board to have discussion on a variety of items that we all need to be on the same page, we all need to have the same information, be talking the same language. So, our intent tonight is for that. Also, public comment, we'd like to reserve for a later meeting. There will have to be another meeting following this one for us to provide a vote. And at that time is when we would anticipate those of you who would have something in terms of a public comment, that'll be your opportunity. In the meantime, I'd ask that you respect the process. We appreciate you being here. This session is very important, I think. The board wants everybody to know what we're talking about, what the future involves, and this whole process for our college, for our community, and for our students. So, would ask for you to be respectful during the process tonight. Really essentially what this comes down to tonight, as most everyone knows, where we've been as a board has been discussion of a merger or partnership or affiliation with Fort Hayes State University to provide four-year baccalaureate degrees, continue our current two-year programs, and then the addition of a technical institute. So, that process has been through various stages. As expected, some unexpected questions have come up. You can never anticipate every eventuality, I don't think. So, along the way, it's been necessary to have additional meetings, one of which was about three weeks ago, for us to address athletics in particular. As a result of that meeting, K-Board wants us to clarify as a board our position on working through this process by the 14th of November. So, that's why we're here tonight, is to discuss where we're at. Hopefully, you know, I look at our board, we're like everybody else that's an elected board in this city. They've all dealt with some difficult issues, some tough issues, so we're not alone. We've seen it play out in some of our other elected boards. So, we find ourselves in this position tonight, and I would really like for the board to openly discuss where we're at, particularly the things that we agree on. Because I believe in this process, it's a lot of the negatives have been focused on, and I think there's a lot of agreement that we can identify. I would mention Don Webb's unable to be with us tonight because of illness, but he will have access to this meeting via DVD, is that right Carla? We've asked Carla also just to act as a little bit of a scribe for us tonight, which she typically does anyways, writing down things that we may bring up as points of agreement and commonalities. And then, we'll have to talk about the things that are at issue, maybe in some depth, whatever the board needs. We did request some information from various sources, and certainly would also have available, if the board had any questions, someone to clarify, but that information is available to us in our work packet tonight. So, and it's also important, I think, you know, emotions are high on any, both sides of an issue this big, and I think that's fine. I think it's important to be passionate about what you believe in, but I think it's also really important for us to be very objective when we're looking at decisions and plans that will influence this community for many years to come. So, with that being said, what I'd like to do initially is just open it up, and again, if you as a board can kind of act like we're just chatting here, talking out loud, thinking out loud about those issues on which we agree, the first thing that I can think of, and even though it's rather elementary Carla, I'd ask for you to just kind of scribble them down, the first thing that I think we could all agree upon is we're interested in higher education. We recognize the need for expanded opportunities for our students here in Dodge City. And how we accomplish that goal is part of what we're dealing with. I think, is that pretty clear? We could all agree that four-year education is an opportunity, the tech center has an opportunity, and then continuing the particular programs that have made DC3 what it is over the years, those to be continued. Any comments on that particular issue?
I said from the very beginning, I wanted this to happen, but since I have so many questions, I'm not ready to just give it away like that. So, there's a lot of work to do, and I remind you again, Mr. Chairman, this is the first work session we have had.
Well, I apologize for some of the lack of information, and apologize also saying that there has been work that's been ongoing. Steering Committee has been doing a lot of this stuff that will be a part of an operating agreement. And again, as I've stated before, that information's been available to all the board. However, it's maybe not always in an avenue that's easily accessible to all of them. Also, I think every time we've met as a board and some discussion has come up, those things have been available to us. So, again, I'll take responsibility for missteps. I certainly don't think that there's a playbook that we've been going by, so I will take responsibility for that. However, opportunities have been offered to, and continue to be offered to, members of this Board of Trustees to be involved, and that should be made clear as well. So, I appreciate your comments. And if we, any other additions to any of this?
I do have one other question. When Dr. Merida had, as you've indicated, suggestions that might be considered by the board, and then we didn't get to do that because of the open meeting laws, what might those be that we should have in mind? What do we need to know that she wanted to say to us?
Actually, I don't know Florist Jean, I didn't have anything in mind with that particular terminology. I was just using that phrase as a, okay, let's hear what her view of it might be. There's no particular plans that I'm aware of. So, you know, it was just a phrase or a term that was used. Another thing I think is really important to stress, and I've said it before, maybe I've not emphasized it enough, that your concern about questions regarding how this is actually going to play out and how it's going to look, is based on not a white paper, not a template, not a preliminary report that we've said we're going to investigate, but it's really going to be based on an operating agreement which this board will vote on and approve when it's completed. And again, I apologize that not as much work has been done on that operating agreement as I would like either, but some things have been started as far as the process.
Mr. Chairman, is there any way maybe tonight we could not identify some of those issues that need to be addressed in the operating agreement? You know, because when you listen to all the stories around, one story says it's going to happen this way, and another says it's going to happen that way, you know, the mill levy's going up, or the mill levy's going down, or what have you. Maybe some of these points we can identify and then move forward, say, okay, these are the elements that are going to have to be addressed in the operating agreement.
You're saying more like contingent upon, or?
Yeah, between trustees and Fort Hayes State University, of course blessed by the Kansas Board of Trustees.
Personally, I question why we're even having a work session, because, you know, for a merger. Because when Morris made his motion on October 7th, it was to pursue a merger, and that motion failed. So, I guess I don't see why we need to keep discussing it with a vote to come, since we already voted.
I don't think that was, I don't think that was the meaning of that motion.
The intent of the motion was to get the athletic issue resolved, that was the intent of the motion.
That might have been the intent, but that's not what the motion was.
That was what the intent was anyway.
Do we vote on intent or motion though?
Well, the wording wasn't very good.
Motion, exactly.
I think Attorney Curves made that clear, that things were not very straightforward in it. So, it probably just needs clarified.
I can read.
I can do it. The last sentence wasn't in there.
But that last?
That was your interpretation, which wasn't in the original motion, that was clear.
Yeah.
So, we'll move beyond that.
Yeah.
I mean, I think that coming together tonight, I think it's a real, this is a really good opportunity. I think Florist Jean's got some excellent points, and has made some excellent points and raised some really good questions, so I'd like to see if we can use those as a jumping off point to talk tonight and say, you know, issue number one, feasibility study, you brought that up multiple times Florist Jean, so let's, let's talk about it. Let's get some things down as to what we do want to do. I don't think, personally, I don't disagree with having a feasibility study done, and let's make that one of the points. I guess it's time, you know, all of this has been really new for all of us, totally new. Nobody's done this before, or we wouldn't be going through all this. So, I would hope that we can use tonight as an opportunity to talk about those things, what can we go forward, or what do we need to do to go forward and talk? Because we've all heard just as much comments for as we've heard against, and we're not doing our due diligence for either side if we don't put a little more effort out. I feel that I've failed in that, I feel that all of us have failed a little bit in that, that we, now is our time to go forward and put some more effort into this, and say, well, what can we do, you know, what are the points can we go forward on?
But he made the motion to pursue the merger, and it failed. So, by pursue the merger, if you want to talk about a partnership where they add to what we already have, that's different.
Well, that's what I'm bringing up Jason, that's what I want to talk about tonight.
Okay, if that's not a merger.
Let's not call it a merger anymore, let's just call it, let's go forward and figure out what we can do to make higher education a better opportunity for Dodge right now. That's what I want to talk about tonight, I don't.
Affiliation and everything, right? There's a lot of ways you can handle this.
So, but that's, I mean, and that's, okay, so point number two, you know, first issue's feasibility study. Second issue, what other partnership options are there? You know, the accreditation options that Mr. Coker brought up at the last meeting, you know, with us, those were all new to us, unfortunately. I'm glad he brought those, I wish it wasn't so late in progress. So, that's what I want us to talk about tonight, so that we can come to some common ground, because I think there's a lot of common ground here. Even amongst the people who are just, you know, lividly and adamantly opposed to this, start out their comments, well, I think higher education's a great thing for Dodge, and we need, you know, we need it, but we don't need it this way. So, let's figure out, I guess that's what I hope to do, or what I would hope for tonight is, what is the other way?
Well, everybody wants.
Let's propose that, let's figure that out, and put it back to Fort Hayes, and put it back to K-Board, because this is our opportunity. K-Board's going to meet next Friday, and so let's get some things down as to, here's what we want, and if you guys can make it work with that, or we can find some ground and keep working with them, obviously, it's negotiation all the way through, then let's do that, but let's just not, I just don't want to throw our hands up right now. We're too far into this to just throw our hands up.
Everybody wants a four-year institution, but a partnership and a merger are two different things.
And so, let's discuss that, let's talk about how we make a partnership out of it, and maybe make agreements on this.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think you're right. Wording is always an issue. That's unfortunately, some of the buzzwords, whatever inflammatory thing, it's easy to get focused on a word. I think that's what we're trying to do tonight, is talk amongst ourselves and say, what do we agree on? We agree on the need for four-year education, we think this would be a great opportunity for our students. How we do it is the key thing that I would like to say, what are the contingencies, the things that we really need to have happen for us to be comfortable with this going forward? I think that's what you're referring to Florist Jean, is that, is that correct?
Yeah. And I appreciate what Jeremy said. We've stuck on the word dissolve the college.
Yeah.
That's as far as I'm concerned, the priority issue. And why does it have to happen? We've not been given a good answer.
Yeah.
We can do a partnership, what Jeremy's saying has been done all over the country, very successfully. And there are so many negatives in merger that it just needs to be thoroughly discussed.
Yeah. Well, again, affiliation, partnership, however we can accomplish the goal, I really think it's what's important. Again, being stuck on one specific way, or again, getting stuck or high-centered on a word, that's not what we're intending to do, I don't think that's what any of us want to do. So, again, back to the point of, again, what things do we agree upon? It's fairly clear that the concept as far as higher education and opportunity for our students, and we haven't even talked about the benefits that would develop to our community in southwest Kansas economically. If you ask anybody that has a four-year college in their city, they're not pushing them out or trying to get rid of them, they're really glad that they're there for all the various benefits that are approved from that. So, again, it comes down to some of these things, like Morris had mentioned, athletics. We all agree that athletics is an important part of what we do. The question is figuring out some of these things that are details, that we may not have the answers for tonight, but saying, okay, this is one of those contingency things. We want to try to continue to operate on the NJCAA level, and what things do we have to do in terms of numbers, accreditation, naming, all those things, naming of this campus, so that it's defined as what it is, and not just Fort Hayes? I don't think that's what we're about. And again, from the stuff, I appreciate Casey's work on these preliminary things with athletics, and forwarding the emails to us, you know, you can read for yourself, kind of what they're wanting us to do, say, it just has to, you have to have some administrative capabilities, you have to have some separateness, which I guess would mean dissolve doesn't occur, right? We ought to get past that. Because again, I think, for whatever you think about athletics, leadership involved, it's not just sports, it's participation, it's all those kind of things that are important. So, that's one issue that, as a part of an operating agreement, I think could be defined, and said, let's do it this way, let's make sure that we have this in place that protects what we have, because we do it well. So.
Well, the proposal pretty much, you know, paints a picture as a hybrid-type.
Right.
Institution, which doesn't exist in the state of Kansas at this point in time. So, you know, all of this has to be defined in the operating agreement, in the end of the year. And there has to be safeguards in there to protect, of course, the taxpayers, so we're not hit with a tax increase at some time. And I personally would like to recommend that one of the bullet points we come up with tonight is that there's going to be a cap on the mill levy, whatever the Dodge City Community College mill levy is. That then would eliminate any possibility that Ford County taxpayers would be sending money to Hayes, some people are thinking that. So, we can build in a lot of safeguards and assurances in the operating agreement, and we've got some time to do that, because, you know, it's going to take the legislature another six months before we even know if enabling legislation's going to be possible.
Right. And just to make clear, I don't think anybody in this board would vote for anything that would send our tax money out of Ford County. That has been stated before, but if it needs to be a bullet point, and in this operating agreement to make it as clear as it can be made, I'm all for that.
If you get it statute, you're not going to answer.
Yeah, right. So, again, some of those things, we realize what we want to keep and want to, in terms of being responsive to the taxpayers, they ought to get, they ought to get a good product for their money, in whatever situation we're in. And we all realize that, again, I think what Morris is saying, there's no playbook here that we've been going by, but it, as time has gone on, it's developed that we have some concerns. The only place that I think you can address those is with assurances or contingencies in an operating agreement, which provides some protection for us, if you, if you want to use protection as the word. Maybe it's more assurances that it's a product that we know what we're trying to accomplish by putting those things in. So, that's a good bullet point. What other things in terms of, you know, that could be identified? Again, I don't want to get to every specific item, but for those who have really pointed, high-on-the-list concerns, I think we ought to bring those out in the open tonight, if possible. Because again, as we've gone on in this process, it's not, hasn't been as easy as checking off the box and say, this is done, this is done, this is done. At some point, it will get there, where you have to check off the box and say, this is okay, this is okay, and this is, is or is not. But, you know, tonight, trying to figure out every aspect of things is going to be pretty difficult, because there are questions that we don't even know exist right now, probably. So, again, what are some of the bigger things that bring up red flags in your minds? We've talked about a couple of them, dissolve, that's fine.
Well, one thing I heard, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
One thing I hear from people is, why are we paying for this and having no input into the operations? Because all operations set would be Fort Hayes. And ours is only to take care of the physical plant, and the insurance, and the, you know, all the security and that kind of stuff.
I see.
So, why?
Okay.
Why are we only an advisory board when we're paying for it?
I'm not sure of the answer in terms of terminology again. Again, I don't think we've got that far enough in the process to know, okay, this is where the money's coming in, this is where it goes out. To me, the overriding thing is everything that's generated on this campus, as long as it stays for the benefit and the operations of this place, to me, that's most important. And I think you're referring to some of that. So, I don't know, what do you think about budget stuff Morris? Is there, I may not be getting your question right, for one thing.
Well, you know, one of the bullet points very well could be that all of the revenues earned as a result of attendance on this campus will stay on this campus.
Auxiliary, anything.
We've heard this verbally from the president of Fort Hayes, that all the revenues that are generated as a result of this enrollment.
Well, we have indebtedness that we have to pay off. We have indebtedness that stays on this campus, we have to pay off the indebtedness.
Right. And that's part of the reason that you can't take those funds and use them elsewhere. I'm agreed on that.
And I think that's built, that's built into the budget projections, so I think very easily we can take care of that. It's in the budget that, you know, the steering committee has.
Right. Getting back to some of the work that the steering committee's done.
The other point is that I think that we need to have the operating agreement, that the board will certainly be participating in selection of this chief executive officer for this campus. I think that's very important.
That's whoever's the day-to-day person involved or in charge of what happens here. And I agree, I mean, that, I know that was a point of interest earlier, and it needs to be a specified thing. So, again, I'm not trying to skirt your question about where does this, I'm just not sure if I'm understanding the import of it Florist Jean. As I have seen it in the budget, and again, I'm not a great budget person, and I'm hoping, or I would anticipate that we work on providing information to our board for those of us who are not used to looking at these things so often, that's in a more understandable format. But again, my experience, just in terms of what I've seen and what I've heard talked about in the steering committee, is that the way this budget is happening, there, even if you look five years down the road, when some of our bond payments are more taken care of, it looks like a real positive thing for, for this community. And again, I don't see us in this new budget writing any checks to anybody that are different than what we're already writing. Would you say that's a fair assessment?
Yeah, I think, as far as, if the housing is self-supporting, in other words, and we have a proposal to increase rental fees on the dormitory, so that would be costly. Our debt service does not extend very far, because, you know, the capital outlay bonds, of course, are limited to five years, and the only debt service we have beyond that would be the revenue bonds, which would be the dorms, and I think we still have some more on the municipal leases, equipment, so forth, and the science building.
Well, I appreciate you saying that.
So, when you look at our debt service, we're really not bad shape for a debt is concerned.
I appreciate you saying that.
In about five years, we should be pretty well cleared up for a debt.
Because that's one of the things that's been thrown up about how terrible our finances are, and how terrible our CFO has kept them, and that is so damaging.
I agree with you, I think that was way overstated.
That is unnecessary and disrespectful, and I don't like that. So, whoever said that, you got my message. It isn't.
We're in agreement on that.
And I agree with you on that.
We, there's one thing we agree on then.
But we need the, we need the athletics, we need those folks in athletics to pay off the dorms. That's the ones that come in and fill the dorms. And if we mess up athletics and get out of NJCAA, we're skirting with financial trouble.
Yeah, but Dr. Whitmer, I mean, we very well cleared up the NJCAA.
I think we're good, aren't we Casey? If we, if we're separately named, if we have, if our athletic department doesn't in any way have anything to do with Fort Hayes State University, if it's separate, then we can continue playing in the NJCAA if those in the J-Hawk Conference, if the other presidents in the J-Hawk Conference will allow us to play in the J-Hawk Conference, and they have to vote on it, then, then we can play them. Now, from the national rules, and we've outlined it very clearly in the documentation we've given you, it needs to occur that way. If you keep talking about an affiliated college or a partnership college, then we will probably keep our accreditation for our college, and that makes it real. And it also qualifies us for Title V, it qualifies us for federal grants, we get back into the, we get back into this, into, into where we got all this money before, and we've been kicked out of it now, just threatening, and if we even talk about something besides an affiliation, a merger, or our college just becomes Fort Hayes State at Dodge City, then our Track VII money will never be able to apply for it again. There's a question whether, whether we can get Title V, we would lose our federal ID number, we would lose our accreditation, and that's complex. Also creates problems for our helicopter program, because according to what Anthony found out from the VA, we'll have a three or four-year wait to get it back up, and I know Lord and Jerome won't stay with us, he'll take that somewhere else. But if you talk about an affiliation, if you talk about art colleges, much like Washburn and Washburn Tech, then it's a, it's a situation where we stay in the J-Hawk Conference, it qualifies us for all of these things, and we don't have a three-year wait to get our helicopter, or any of our, those technical programs that are funded by VA redone. So, those are issues, those are issues we have to deal with.
Well, the merger with Washburn and the tech school, that was a merger, was it not?
Well, no.
That's what it's called.
They're affiliated college. They, they, it's not a total merger, it's, it's different than a, than a complete merger. And it's an affiliation, and that has not even been on the table yet in any discussion we've had with Fort Hayes. They have said, you will be one institution and we will merge. Well, that creates a lot of problems.
That's why it comes back to, again, if we find issues that need to be resolved in an operating agreement, that's what we're talking about tonight.
Yeah. Then that's, I'm just trying to point out some of them.
Yeah. Well, again, there's, we've had questions come up about. Well, again, there's, we've had questions come up about, you know, accreditation being lost and all these apocalyptic scenarios, which you have to think about with any situation that you go into. And I think, again, a part of an operating agreement would be, if we affiliated or partnered with Fort Hayes State, and that would occur at some unknown point down the road, that we would protect ourselves by saying, "You maintain our accreditation while we're in process until we're fully re-accredited." Again, just a protection that's put in the operating agreement before it ever happens, not assuming that it would.
If it's two separate institutions, though, those problems are taken care of. You don't have to have all those bullet points. And that, to me, that's what the whole thing comes down to, is that one issue.
Yeah, you may have, you may have a point in that regards, but again, I think you're still going to have to have operational plans and an agreement that lays out how this thing's going to function. And we do not know how that's going to look tonight.
But if we're not, if we don't merge them, we're two separate institutions, we keep athletics, keep the helicopter program, our dorms stay full, everything runs as is, and we don't lose anything, and take a risk of losing anything either.
That may be the, an option. The question is, are you going to get the required money from the state for the other component of this that is out of our hands? We just have K-Board request those things. Maybe they would, maybe they wouldn't. I don't know.
Of course, the big question hanging out there is, is the K-Board going to approve any kind of affiliation agreement, you know, short of some type of merger? We don't know the answer to that right now.
Right.
But that's where we're at. If we can, that's where we're at. If we can come back, you know, if we can come together, we can come to them next week with what we feel, what we're comfortable with at this point.
Call it what you want to call it.
And if they don't, if they say no, okay, well, they said no. But we, we at least tried our best to do what we could to make something work that was going to be the right thing for Dodge City and Dodge City Community College. Not just the right thing for all of it.
What I can do is, I can sit there and write it up for you, and start putting bullet points after looking at what comes out of here tonight, and really get my staff on it, and we'll write a real clear document of what you want to do. All of us, it's just like Dr. Conan said, all of us, every one of us, I don't know of anyone who doesn't want us to be offering baccalaureate programs and have that textbook here. And so what we got to do, we got to figure out how that's going to work, and then negotiate with the Board of Regents and make it work.
I like, yeah, I like the term that you use, negotiation, because really, from the outset, that's what it has boiled down to, is there's probably going to be some give and take along the way.
Well, there has to be.
Yeah. But if we know what we really want, what we really need, that, that doesn't stop the process.
I am more than willing to write this thing up for you, and have it done within a week, okay?
It'll have to be.
We'll start on it in the morning.
Well, we need to spend some time talking about the technical institution and the scope of that project and the impact that that project would have on this community, because that is impressive. We get 10 corporations offering programs here in a technical institution, and bringing in, you know, 100 students per year, literally doubling the student population on this campus. That is a very significant issue.
See.
And we just simply cannot afford to let that.
Well, nobody's argued about that. Nobody's argued about that.
We also have to be real careful when we take care of the technical things we're doing for our high schools that live around us too. And we can't, we, those corporations and those technical programs, we have a responsibility to our local youth. And, and, and we, we train a lot of people and get a lot of people to.
We're not proposing changing anything we're doing.
Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, everything we're doing now is, in all the proposals I've heard, is stay the same.
Okay.
You know, basically, we serve local workforce requirements. It's not going to change.
Okay.
We're still going to have the workforce requirement here.
But the sticking point is the dissolution of the college with the accreditation as is. And we've talked about that several times. And why isn't it logical to leave the college like it is and bring the other in?
Yeah, that's what, I think that's the point we need to go ask. And that's, that's what I hope we can do. I hope we can go ask them that. Because otherwise, if we just throw our hands up right now and don't do anything, we don't get an answer. Nobody's going to answer that question because it's not offered. So, I hope we can make this list. I'm glad Dr. Woodburn will put this together for us, and then we can come together. And if we all feel comfortable with that list, then we can present that to the board, the Board of Regents, and they can then make the decision as to what they do feel or don't feel comfortable doing, and then come back to us with the other, the negotiation or an explanation as to why it won't, Florstein. Because that's the question, I mean, all of us have had. There's nobody at this table in this room that can answer what, why wouldn't it work? Because we're not all 100% sure how it's going to work. And nobody's really got that answer. It's all hypothetical anyways. But we have to lay things out for ourselves to protect ourselves, but allow ourselves to grow in the same way. We can get too conservative. We can curl up in the corner and hide. That, that won't get us any further than where we're at. Or we can try to, you know, try to come back with an alternative option. And I, that's what I'd like to see us put together tonight, is what's the alternative option? What can we come in? That's what Dr. Woodburn's offering to write up for us, so.
Danny and I have been dreaming about it. We've been working on it. We've had a million discussions of how the things work.
What we have going for us is the fact that, you know, we want this, something to succeed here, where we get the baccalaureate degrees, the technical institution, and the services that we're currently providing it as a community college. The Board of Regents wants this to happen. And I know the governor wants this to happen. I'm assuming the legislature will want it to happen. So, and we need to embrace that.
But we should tell them how we want it to happen. And that's what we haven't done. We haven't made any options for them to consider.
Well, this is a first step.
Letting some bullet points down.
Maybe not a first step. It's certainly, several steps on the right of the road to that, yeah.
I want to add something else to that, too.
Yeah.
At one time, two or three years ago, when these were, these issues were being discussed not as thoroughly as they have been lately, we were told that no other Regent School would be welcome on this campus. I want to open up that issue, too. This is ag country. Why can't we have K-State in here, doing some ag courses? Why do we have to limit ourselves to something we've been pushed into?
Well, I don't like your term "pushed into."
Well, but haven't we been?
No, I, I think by virtue of compressed timeframe, yeah, we've been faced with some decisions to keep going forward. And I don't, I, I think that's totally appropriate for a board to say, "We're going to keep exploring and studying this and come up with an alternate plan." And I think your point is valid. I don't know if it really has anything to do necessarily with where we want to go with our resolution next week.
We want to leave it open.
Open. I think that's reasonable. I do. What do the rest of you guys feel? In terms of that, again, I, I don't recall that two or three years ago, but.
It was.
It was specific. Thanks, Ken. Okay.
But, of course, the talk's all different now, so, but it's a point of negotiation, for sure.
Yeah.
It's like everything. I, I mean, I hope we can, number one, come back to the Board of Regents with the mindset that we, we are a unified body now, and we are going to come forward with our plan, and that we can negotiate back and forth with them on what that plan can look like. And if they choose not to accept it, or Fort Hayes chooses not, but we got to start working together on the negotiation. We're not going to get every point we asked for, and they're not, and we don't want them to get every point they're asking for, but we've got to be able to start talking more and finding some middle ground. And I hope that's what we can do with this.
Well, what I'll do is, we start getting drafts of this, you're going to start getting them. We'll probably have a pretty good draft of it within two days. And you'll get it, and you can look it over and send it back to us with more ideas, or maybe something we missed. And so it's going to get, the email's going to get fast and furious.
Well, I would like to say that we know that Clark has done a masterpiece here. Actually, Clark, that might be your doctorate. Who knows?
Oh, God.
But anyway, there is a, there is a base here for all those issues.
Right, right.
And we thank you.
Thank you, Clark.
Again, a perfect example of having options available to us and saying, "Okay, it's not, we can't do it." It's like, here's the options, and it makes it clear for those of us on the board to make an informed decision and choice. I think what Jeremy said in terms of proposal to Kansas Board of Regents, showing that this board has a plan, or the beginnings of a plan, is pretty important. And again, they can do with it what they will, but it's definitely, I, I would think that if they're in favor of this project going through in some way, shape, or form, that they would hope that the people on the ground here are going to have some ideas, that those are worth considering, you know? So, I'm glad that some of these points have been kind of elucidated tonight. I don't think we need to have Carla read them all, because they will be coming to us in email form for editing and additions and stuff in the next couple of days.
Could we go back to Jeremy's point about feasibility study, because particularly on the numbers for the tech center? That has been just, we've had numbers thrown out, and we don't have any verified reason to accept that those will be there. How do we know that it might last two years? The pool for those companies has filled, and maybe the pool for the baccalaurates is filled in a couple of years.
But Florstein, we do have some evidence that, that Pat George and his office, working with Ed Hammond, have been working on some companies and identifiers. We have some evidence of that.
We haven't heard it. We just know they are, but.
Yeah. Well, I would think that'd be kind of a sensitive issue until they know that.
They can't announce names.
Right, right. If you saw the brochure that we all got, I think.
Yeah, but that's just been the last week.
Right. That's a very new thing. And again, it shows Dodge City as a potential location. But yeah, you can, you can obviously see the benefits and the possibilities there. As far as the other feasibility things, yeah, if it costs us some money, or if we have to pay somebody to do a study, or again, partner with Fort Hayes to do a study, since I don't have any problem with that. One point that I'd heard another board member make, though, at some point, is, again, doing these projections as far as what a baccalaureate, you know, the demand, the pent-up demand, it's going to be, go away, and nobody will be coming here. Well, how many four-year degrees are we, are we offering now? Zero. So if you're educating or providing 50 a year or 100 a year, who's to say that that is not a successful addition to what we're, what we're offering as far as our community college associate and those type degrees, so.
I have always believed, and I still do, that we have three or four community colleges that are very close to us. And if we have the right, if it, if thing is priced right, and I'm certain it will be, that we'll have a lot of those students come here, come to Dodge City to get their baccalaureate degree here, just because it's close to home. And I think that'll happen. And we have pretty large Hispanic communities in liberal and in garden, and they can drive back and forth and go here. But yet, their culture is that they can't leave home. They can't go to Kansas State. They can't even go to Fort Hayes State. But no, I believe they'll come here. I believe it in my heart.
Now, that was expressed very eloquently in that memo or letter from the young lady.
Yeah, it was stressed.
With her personal experience.
And we admit, we know that. That's, that's not a.
That's one, that's one theme that I've heard from several of the educators in the USD 443. Obviously, they know their clientele. They know their students who they've been dealing with for all these years, and they think it's an untapped resource, kind of like you do, Don, so.
And actually, I'd like to make a comment about that, too. And that was one of the things I said in one of my notes, I think, about a conglomeration of the community colleges, because I expect to see someday more of that between the community colleges, and the Regents are going to coordinate that.
Yep.
I fully expect to see that.
I, I think you're right, Florstein. You know, if you, you've been around for a long time and know that.
Oh, oh, oh.
The community college system, the funding, and how it works, and I've heard, talked about for years, that there's no way that this system is going to continue exactly as it is in the future. And it's going to be collaboration, it's going to be working together, it's going to be involvement with other Regents universities across the board.
Possible consolidations.
Consolidations, just like they used to do with you.
That comes up every year, too.
Yeah.
And, 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 community colleges need to become partners with universities.
They do, yeah.
They need to. It'll be healthy.
Partners.
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 But this is our opportunity to lead the way on this and not be one of the ones that comes in on the back end after it's already been done somewhere else.
We can be the leader.
It's our time to, this is our chance now, though, to step it up and make it what we want it to be, so that we can be the leader in this, and not just take the backseat.
I do want to remind you, though, that in the Pratt meeting, what, a month ago now, Andy Tompkins was there, and he made the statement in that meeting, "There will not be a seventh university." So it is not going to be a standalone university. We will be partners.
Yeah, yeah.
We will not have a new university on its own.
And that's given.
That's a given.
Glad you brought that up. I had not.
Yeah, we heard him say.
That it was a different consideration. I had always expected that it was that, so.
So we have to play with their rules, too.
You're right.
Nothing wrong with partners.
Right. Trying to think of any other issues. Again, what, what it boils down to, I think, is that if we can show that we're being proactive in this and not being just led down the path, I think that'll allay a lot of your concerns, Florstein, and, and yours, Jason, man, we're just being told what, what to do. And I think that's the right role for us to fill.
We can build this ourselves. And if they accept it, that's great.
I'd like to see Fort Hayes maybe commit to, you know, which baccalaureate programs they would offer, provided the enrollment is sufficient.
Well, you know, the feasibility study that was done in 12, not 2012, it listed about four, I think, and teachers, universities.
Training, business, health services.
Health-related issues.
Health-related. Those are the three that I recall.
And agriculture, I think, with one other.
I believe that was at one time on there, too. So we know what we really ought to be stressing.
And, and I'm also going to propose, as I write this up, between us and liberal and garden, we all have 15 to 20 extremely qualified faculty members that can teach baccalaureate level courses. And I would love to see, while we're doing this, we partner with them, and maybe some of those courses are taught on their campuses, too.
Or they could come over here.
Or they could come over here.
And we don't object if part of it's online, if there's face-to-face in part of it. It's hybrid.
We're still old school, Florstein.
Yeah.
You've got to have your teaching face-to-face.
Well, that feasibility was face-to-face. That was done in 2012.
Yeah. I thought, I thought it was interesting, though, reading some of the comments in the feasibility study on why students would choose not. the feasibility study on why students would choose not to pursue it here in Dot City if it existed, is because they were going to do it online.
Well, and they're doing it. A lot of more enrolled today.
So again, it's got to be a hybrid. Like you said, it can't just be all or none.
The one thing I don't want to see, I don't want to see a lot of hang up on the numbers of the baccalaureate as far as personally, I mean, there has to be some numbers there. But a lot of people say, well, if there's not, you know, if we're not graduating 50 in each, you know, in each degree every year, I, if we graduate five more people in those four programs a year, that's 20 graduates a year from this college. That's 20 more than what we're graduating right now with baccalaureate degrees. And the potential and probability of those people staying in this community, adding back to this community, giving back to this community in 20 a year, that's huge. And so I don't, I, really, one of my frustrations has been people saying, well, there's only going to be like five or 10. That's five or 10 more than what we have now. And if it doesn't cost us anything, and if we can make this work to make it work for all of us, and it doesn't cost us, the taxpayers, and it doesn't cost the college, we don't have to give up a lot of things to do that. We're silly not to offer five. I mean, if that's five Dot City high graduates that can stay in Dot City, get a degree, come back and work in Dot City and give back to this community, that's 10 times, I mean, we have to send 300 off to KU to get one back. I mean.
And I think there is also the potential, Jeremy, of us starting a program that is not being mentioned now, that's really not being offered in Kansas now, and we get a bunch of Kansans coming here and taking. I can see that happening.
And that's the advantage, too, of having another Regent school offer their courses. If K-State has some ag business courses, there would be some students in that.
But Haze offers ag, too, though. So I'm just saying, the one, and this is not, I'm just bringing up, talking about this. But I, my worry would be is that if, one of the points I see, and that's why I say, you know, this is going to be something we're going to have to look at and talk with if they do kind of accept some things and come back to us with options, maybe one of the points where if we expect Haze to be the orchestrators of the technical program and then some of the other things we're offering on campus, they may get a little touchy about having K-State come in and offer things over the top of them. And K-State's not really putting anything into it from there.
But we can ask.
Sure. No, and I'm just bringing up the argument from their side. It's not my argument.
But you know, right now, we have online for Wichita and for Haze and for K-State. So we got that right now. And they will decide how many people it takes to make the plan.
I don't think you have to exclude, but also being sensitive to the idea, if you, if you decide that you're partnering with an institution, it ought to be beneficial. It's going to be beneficial to them. We've talked forever about this needs to be a win-win. It needs to be a win for us, or it makes no sense to do. And obviously, they wouldn't be interested if, if there, if there wasn't a win for them as well. So. What other thoughts come to mind?
Are we going to prioritize the points we need? I know what mine is.
Okay. What, what is it?
College stays in place. The rest of it comes in and builds around it.
Okay. So you want the dissolution thing out of the equation?
Yes.
I understand that.
Gone.
And again, I, I think they could all have equal weight. Because again, my, my point, and whether it's right or not, the way my impression has been of this, is from the outset, if we are, continue to offer the programs that we have on this campus with the faculty teaching the same classes and courses, don't you consider that we're doing what our mission is? And again, if we have to name it correctly to maintain that separateness, that's fine with me. I, I think that's a good thing. But the functionality of what, if we do everything and say, we're just going to make sure that we maintain a silo, I don't think that's the right motivation. The motivation to me ought to be, we continue offering those programs, as we've said from the outset, that are essential to our mission here in Dot City for our students in Fort County, but it's also a wide group of students otherwise. As long as we're staying with that, again, semantics, words, and those kind of things, I know they bear some importance because of the emotion we bring up. But as long as we're faithful to what we're doing, to me, that's at least as important. So again, in terms of prioritizing, I think they have all equal importance. Because if you try to raise one higher than the other, well, what if they kick out the thing and says, well, your tax money isn't all that important, or your accreditation to work. I think they ought, all ought to just be a part of this document. That's my feeling, unless someone thinks we need to.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Prioritize. I, I believe they're all important, including that one that's highest on your list.
Make it number one, then.
All right. Well, taken.
I agree with Florstein.
Okay.
Well, you all are going to get a chance to massage it before anybody else sees it.
Okay. Well, again, the idea of this, this special board meeting tonight was to come to some sort of a consensus in terms of what we agree upon. Again, I think the Board's consensus has been documented well by Carla. Thank you very much. Dr. Woodburn can read your scratches. And then, yeah, I, I appreciate the work this Board has put in. It's part of what we're supposed to do. And now is a pretty critical time to bring up things that you think are important or essential to this process going forward. Because now is our time to do that.
Or if you think of them, drop me a line.
Yeah.
Well, and I think the underwriting premise is that this Board is responsible legally for what happens to this college.
Right. And we have done no signing of anything, no change of anything that we're doing until that operational agreement, which is our main part of this thing, is, is handled and managed to, and massaged, if you will, to our satisfaction. And then, at whatever point in time down the road this all happens, there will be plenty of time for changes to be made, adjustments to be made, and review of things.
And it has to be approved by the Kansas Legislature.
Right. So again.
And there will be new ones after tomorrow.
Right. And we, I, I think the other thing is if this Board controls what it's controllable for us and the other parts of it, you know, we can't predict the political winds or the landscape, but we know what we're responsible for, and that's what I think is most important. So, any other comments?
Could I ask Council if he has any comments on what we've talked about?
One of the things that you're talking about as far as Dr. Woodburn preparing drafts and sending them out, I think you need to be cautious about the Open Meeting Act.
Okay.
And not getting involved in a conversation among the trustees. Maybe the best way to handle that is when Dr. Woodburn sends out a draft. If you have a response, you need to respond to Dr. Woodburn.
Individually.
And not get involved in a conversation by the trustees about those kinds of things. I think that's important.
You didn't have to reply to all of them.
Yeah.
You can send it out to all, but don't reply.
Okay. All right. So I, I appreciate Don's work. And, and what he's committed to this Board before is that he will work on this operating agreement, which he knows is the essential nuts and bolts working apparatus of this. And I told him, I think we'll write him hard for that, and he's going to do it. So make sure and send back your comments, again, individually to him, as Glenn has said, so that we don't run afoul of you. Any other closing comments? Do we need to set a date for our next meeting, or can we do that by sending out a, I mean, obviously, we have to have time for you guys to get this together, but it's not going to be that long of a period of time, right?
I hope to have it pretty well knocked out by the end of the week.
All right. What are you guys' thoughts in terms of your schedules for next week?
I see some of my staff kind of grinning because they know who's going to do it. A lot of them have done a lot of work on it already.
They're experienced.
10th, 11th, or 12th are really the times that we have.
Not Wednesday.
Not, okay. 10 or 11, then. Why don't you just, Carla, send out a option to the trustees, 10 or 11, and we can respond. And you can just set it based on what works.
Send it now would be better.
Would you?
Okay. We're all here.
Yeah.
I'm good on either, either the 10th or the 11th.
I can make that work, too. Our next meeting is the 17th.
Well, let's make it, let's make it the 11th, then. That'll give us one more day.
Weekly meetings.
It's Veterans Day. Veterans Day. Does that make any difference to you?
We'll go the 11th?
Veterans Day.
11th sounds good.
11th, okay. 6 o'clock?
Yeah.
Well, I want to compliment the Board. I want to compliment every single one of you for coming together and, and.
For being contrarian.
No, for being real.
All right. Well, I appreciate your work tonight and your continued thinking. I mean, that, you know, that's what, what we're supposed to do, is make an informed judgment and do the best we can to represent what we think is best for our students, best for our college, best for our community. So.
Students first.
Yep. All right. Appreciate y'all being here. We're adjourned. We'll see y'all next week.